Howdy everyone, today is Tuesday February twenty twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four. The time is five thirty PM. We're here for the regular session of the Copel City Council. There is a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session in the first floor conference room. At the conclusion of our executive session, I will come back out and announce work session, at which time the public will be invited and encouraged to join us. Thank you.
...
Good evening, once again, everybody. The time is six thirty PM. We have adjourned from executive session. And we will move into work session in the personal conference room. The public is invited and encouraged to join us. Thank you.
The time is six thirty three PM. We're here for work session.
I'm excited about work session.
I can tell you are. I wish Joe Mark was. All right, item A is discussion regarding the agenda items. We've got a proclamation which is career and technical education month. Would anybody like to have anything to say about that? Kevin? Anybody else? All right. Anybody have anything on the agenda? Any questions concerning the agenda items for tonight? Kevin?
A quick question on, are the, are the high school students coming to receive that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, awesome. Thank you. No, no, I was just curious, like, because we went and did that tour, and so. There's something there.
John?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions on the agenda items, concerned with the agenda items.
All right.
On number, on letter B, on the fiber network, just one question.
Mayor Steve, we'll tag Tina.
Okay.
Did I have a second one?
No.
Thanks, sir.
There's only one bid that came in, right? So how many TDLR electrical contractors are actually registered that we only get one bid out of this?
You'd have to. I imagine throughout state there's hundreds of, of companies registered to the licensing board.
Okay, if I just won.
Just.
Just so happened, and that doesn't matter.
Yeah, it was put out on bid sync, and they were the only responding.
Yeah, a normal bidding process through bid sync, and for some reason, we only had one there.
Okay. And just out of, I don't know, the pricing, all this, but I saw that master electrician and journeyman electrician, there's only ten dollars difference. Is that normal?
Yeah, well, we compared to, because we did look at other pricing, and it's relatively similar to other, other co-op pricing that we've seen.
Ten dollars difference between master and journeyman?
And helper's even ten dollars less than that.
Well, it was like fifty dollar per, I think, helper, right? It was like, from master to journeyman.
Right.
Okay. That's all I had on that one. Then I had a question on G.
Mr. Garza again.
Yes, me again.
Now, I saw it says that we don't have very many copper inventory, but we don't know what that amount is.
That is correct. So part of this, part of this project is identify, so based off the date that, so lead was banned in the eighties, but it stopped being used in houses in the third, fourth, between the forties and the sixties, and so based off the data we have, we don't believe we have any. And so part of this project is, but we do have to go and, and dig up locations, about a hundred locations to verify that we don't. So based off the data we have and the historical knowledge of the plumbing codes and codes that were set in place, we don't believe we have any.
Okay. And that potholing, that's just the, all the city-owned types, or are we also talking about where at least the residential?
It's at least the service lines to the res- to the residential and commercial facilities.
Okay. And then if it's on the residential side, that's not actually on them?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. That's all I have.
Mike, I'm gonna, kind of a side question on that. I know that there was a lead radiation program in, has that been extended to copper as well?
So that's, that's the, it has, because back, back then when copper and lead were used, they were soldered together. And so that's the point where the copper comes into play. It's not necessarily the copper pipe that we use.
Okay.
It's what they use to solder.
Thank you, thank you. Don?
G, this is the endo settlement, so is this, it's no cost to us when we may get something out of the settlement. That's really, that's really.
This settlement, they went into bankruptcy, so what they did is they folded, manufactured the opioids, was put into the bankruptcy. And so the bankruptcy trustee reached the settlement with various attorney generals, and that's it. And that's the plan that I'm asking you to approve. The state will get the money, they will disperse the money based on population and where you're located.
Okay. So there's really no, no risk or any, nothing, no cost, anything for us. It's just.
There's no way we could litigate this with them, or hire bankruptcy lawyer to fuss with them in bankruptcy court.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Got one last one. Okay, John?
Got a question on E. Just had a question on the agreement, on the equipment inspection. It just, it has a statement, it said, if the equipment product signing this contract has now been covered under the maintenance contract, there'll be additional costs and services. Is that, is that just a, just in case, or is that going to be a problem for us, additional cost with this?
Is it on E?
Yeah, on the, into agreement, it has that language there. I'm just trying to see whether there's any additional cost or.
Can you read it one more time for me, sorry?
It says that if the equipment product signing this contract has now been covered under the maintenance contract or been under warranty or period exceeding thirty days, additional service and support costs may apply.
Yeah, so they're basically taking over what was our night MCA, security services, so all of that should be under that contract. So we shouldn't have anything that's not covered under that contract.
They'll be all inclusive, yes, they will be all issue.
Jim?
Okay, I think my questions were answered. So Mike, on the potholing, that's the process of digging to.
Correct, to identify what that actual service line looks like, what material that service line is.
Okay, thank you, sir. And then on end-to-international on G, so we didn't file a proof of claim, this is just like the tobacco litigation where the Texas Attorney General prosecuted it.
Yeah, we're identified as a potential class member, so we have to supposedly file a predeal of the plan, but the attorney generals are, it's, it's covered anyhow, but they said if you can, just put it on the agenda, approve it, send it in.
Okay, thank you, Bob. That's all I had. Thank you. That's all I had, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Any other items on the agenda items? All right, moving on to item B, this is discussion regarding the audit review. Ms. Vanessa?
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Vanessa Tarver. I'm the Financial Relationships Group Manager in S F B. The item before you today is for your review of the results of the two thousand twenty-three audit. And from the audit firm Weaver, we have John DeBurro, and he will present those results for you. And we have to act for in front of you, as well as a hard copy of the presentation.
Thank you, Vanessa, and good evening, everyone. Thanks for letting me join you this evening to present the results of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three audit. I'm gonna go through the, the hard copy of the presentation that you all have. That provides a number of things with regards to this year's audit. It gives a little bit of an introduction to the, the firm, the audit process. Goes through the audit results and the audit process, some of our required communications, and some financial highlights, information, it's directly from this year's and last year's after. Kind of walking through the slides, on slide three, I served as the engagement partner again this year, and Claire Wooton, who could not be with me this evening, served as the senior manager responsible for the day-to-day audit activities. And on slide four, joining us were some audit associates, Abby Mackenzie and Yedem Kim, provided assistance during the field work. With regards to the audit results, on slide six, we've issued three reports in conjunction with this year's audit. I'm happy to report that all of the results are very favorable. The first audit report that we issued is our independent auditor's report on the city's financial statements, where we've issued an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. That means that we feel that the financial statements for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with GAAP. The second report that we've issued is part of what's known as the single audit. That's our independent auditor's report on internal control of financial reporting and on compliance and other matters, based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. And we're happy to report that there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified in that report. The final report that we've issued is also part of the single audit report package, and that's our independent auditor's report on compliance for each major federal program, and report on internal control of compliance. This is the report that has to do with the, the city's financial, federal financial assistance program this year, which was the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds that had to be audited as a major program. And I'm happy to report that we've issued an unmodified opinion, which means a clean opinion on the city's compliance with the compliance requirements over that federal program. And there were no findings, meaning that there were no instances of significant deficiencies or material weaknesses over internal controls or compliance. So very good news all around. Turning to slide eight, this just kind of gives you a feel of the audit process, that we actually begin our audit process back in the summertime, when we conducted interim field work and also our risk assessment. We came back in January to conduct our final field work, which I'll go into a little bit more detail on. We had an exit meeting with management of last week, and also issued our, our final opinion on the city's financial statements. And then in between now and next year's audit, we always make ourselves and our staff available to Kim and her staff to help with any questions that may arise. And before I get into the audit process, I'd just like to take just a moment to thank Kim and Vanessa and the rest of the finance department for all of their hard work and cooperation in making this a very successful audit once again. The audit process itself is, we conduct our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as generally accepted government auditing standards. And then for the single audit, we have another set of standards called Uniform Guidance that we have to conduct our audit in accordance with. And because we can't look at every transaction of this city, we use a risk-based approach, where we try to identify areas that have a higher likelihood of material misstatement and weigh our resources more heavily in those areas. And we've listed some of those here on the slide, things such as revenue recognition and receivables that are related to those revenues, capital projects, purchasing and compliance with bidding procedures, various liabilities such as payables and accruals, and also the expenditures of federal awards and compliance with the related grant requirements. Just to give you a sense of some of the procedures that we perform during the audit, during last August, we performed interim field work, and the books aren't closed yet because the fiscal year is still underway. So we focus our attentions on planning and risk assessment. We form walkthroughs of the significant, I'm sorry, walkthroughs of the internal controls with the significant accounting and transaction cycles, such as cash disbursements, payroll, investments, receipts, and budget and financial close. If we'd seen any, any weaknesses at that point in time, we would have brought those to management, management's attention, but we have a report that we didn't identify any control deficiencies during those walkthroughs. And if you're wondering what walkthroughs are, those are where we actually sit down with someone, and we go through the actual processes over those significant transaction cycles. We identify controls, and then to make sure that the controls are in place and operating in design, we actually take transactions and walk them through all those points to make sure that the controls are working. We perform tests of the city's compliance with the Public Funds Investment Act, and control testing over both cash disbursements and payroll, where we look at samples of each type of transaction. On slide eleven, when we came back to perform final field work, we use a, a combination of techniques to audit the city's balances and activity for the fiscal year, things such as sampling, vouching, and analytic procedures. We also did our testing for the single audit. As I mentioned, the American Rescue Plan Act, or what's known as the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery program, was the, the major federal program that had to be audited, where we have to test the city's compliance with the directed material compliance requirements associated with that program, as well as look at the various controls over those compliance requirements. Turning ahead to the auditor's communications, I won't read this word for word, but if you have any questions as I go through this, please let me know. On slide thirteen, our required communications with those charged with governance begins with, under generally accepted auditing standards, talking about our responsibilities under generally accepted auditing standards, which is to perform an audit and express an opinion on the city's financial statements in accordance with generally accepted auditing principles. And as I mentioned, I'm happy to report that we've issued an unmodified opinion. On slide fourteen, in addition to those responsibilities, generally accepted government auditing standard requires us to issue a written report on our consideration of the city's internal control of financial reporting and compliance. And that's one of those two reports in the single audit that I mentioned. And again, we're happy to report no findings noted. The final set of standards that we're subject to under Uniform Guidance on slide fifteen requires that we perform testing to express an opinion on the city's compliance with the compliance requirements associated with the major federal financial assistance program. And again, we've expressed an unmodified opinion. Turning ahead to slide sixteen, we're required to communicate to you any unusual transactions or the adoption of new accounting principles. We did not note any unusual transactions during our testing. There was one new standard in particular that the city had to adopt this year, called GADB Statement ninety-six, Subscription-Based Information Technology Arrangements, or C V I Ds. And the, this required the, the city to record submitted assets and liabilities on the financial statements for the first time, similar to what GADB seven did for leases just a year earlier. And turning ahead to page seven, or slide seventeen, there were no instances of any material errors, irregularities, or any kind of acts of fraud noted. There were no material weaknesses in internal control noted. And we also test various estimates that are embodied in the city's financial statements, such as the estimate for allowance, I'm sorry, the estimate of allowance for uncollectible accounts. And based on our testing, we felt that the estimate was reasonable in accordance with the financial statements as a whole. Turning ahead to slide eighteen, there were really no difficulties whatsoever in conducting our audit. We received nothing but cooperation of the city staff. We requested management representations, which were included prior to the issuance of our audit report. Another area that we're required to communicate to are audit adjustments. We're required to communicate to whether there were any audit adjustments that were necessary to arrive at the numbers in the city's financial statements, as well as to report to whether there were any significant uncorrected misstatements. In other words, ones that we passed on, and I'm happy to report that there were none of either. And finally, I'd like to go through some financial highlights with you. Beginning on slide twenty, the next two slides speak to the city's general fund revenues, which were eighty-seven point six million dollars during fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. That was a four point nine million dollar increase over fiscal twenty-two. And it was really the net, net effect of three things that were going on. One was property taxes, which increased by one point three million, sales taxes decreasing by five point four million, and interest income increasing by eight point five million. And if you turn to slide twenty-one, you'll see that there are side-by-side comparisons of fiscal twenty-two to twenty-three. And here, you can see the property taxes increasing from forty point one million to forty-one point four million. The sales and mixed beverage taxes decreasing from twenty-nine point one to twenty-three point seven. And interest income increasing from approximately three hundred thousand to eight point eight million this past year. And if we turn to slide twenty-two and twenty-three, these present similar comparisons of the general fund expenditures for twenty-three and twenty-two. Expenditures in the general fund in fiscal twenty-three totaled fifty-nine point two million dollars, and that was a four point two million dollar increase over the previous year. Just a couple of things to note was that public safety expenditures increased one point nine million dollars due to budgeted increases, single salary and capital outlay. You'll notice that there were debt service expenditures in the general fund this year, and that was due to the reclassification of eligible software expenditures as principal and interest due to the implementation of the GADB Statement ninety-six that I mentioned a few moments ago. And if you turn to slide twenty-three, here you can see the, the increase in the public safety expenditures from twenty-two to twenty-three, and the first time showing debt service expenditures in the general fund because of the implementation of that new standard. Slide twenty-four talks about the general fund fund balance, which at year-end was one hundred forty-four point eight million dollars. And of that total, forty-six point three million dollars was what they call unassigned. It didn't have any constraints on it. That represents approximately seventy-eight percent of general fund expenditures, which is considered healthy. The general fund fund balance overall increased by eleven point five million dollars this past fiscal year due to revenues exceeding expenditures by twenty-eight point four million, and transfers out to other funds were sixteen point nine million. And if we turn to slide twenty-five, this just gives you kind of a side-by-side comparison of the general fund budgetary comparison schedule in the, in the financial statements. Presents the original and final budget, as well as the actual activity. So when we look at the revenues, the final budget was eighty point six million, and revenues came in at eighty-seven point six million. Similarly, with expenditures, the final budget was sixty point nine million, and actual expenditures were fifty-nine point two. So overall, the, the city had a favorable budgetary variance in the general fund of eight point seven million dollars, comprised of two things, the seven million dollar revenue exceeding budget by seven million dollars, and expenditures being below budget by one point seven million. Within that seven million dollars of revenue exceeding the budget, the biggest item was investment income, which was four point three million dollars over budget, and licenses, permits, and fees, which were one point three million over budget. And finally, looking at the water and sewer fund, net position increased by two point seven million dollars during fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. Operating revenues decreased by seven hundred nine thousand dollars, with water rates remaining unchanged. Much of the, the decrease was because sewer revenue decreasing by six hundred and ten thousand dollars due to the implementation of the winter averaging. Operating expenses increased one point two million dollars over the previous year due to a number of things, salaries and maintenance costs, as well as water purchases. Net non-operating revenues increased by two million dollars, primarily due to a two million dollar increase in interest income in the water and sewer fund. And capital contributions decreased four hundred fifty-seven thousand, and transfers out increased by six hundred and fifty-five thousand over the previous year. And I won't bore you all, but GADB, our standard setter for governments, remain busy, but they have a couple of new pronouncements coming out, which we'll make sure that finance is well aware of, which I know that they already are, and that they will make sure that they take all steps to make sure that they're properly implemented. And with that, I'd like to thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. And once again, thank you to, to the city and to the finance department.
John, thank you very much for your presentation. I know that sometimes we make light of the, of the, your findings are excellent, and there's not much to report on, so, you know. But thank you very much for that. Jim?
So looking also at the materials that were seen here on the annual conference of financial report. So this shows in table two, the general revenues and transfers, we had investment earnings go from twenty-two to twenty-three from nine hundred thousand to fourteen point eight million. And then when you look at table three, the changes in net position under general revenues, it jumped under other from three point two million to seventeen point two million, which is, you know, again, pretty stark. And then looking back at your table on page twenty-one, in the audit report, the interest income came up eight point five million. So if it wasn't for the increase in investment earnings and the other increase in general revenues, we would have had a fairly decent deficit in relation to the preceding year's revenues, at least. So what, other than interest income, which was eight point five million of that, what, what kind of investment earnings did we have that went up from nine hundred grand to fourteen point eight million in a single year?
So I think, I think we need to clarify a couple of things.
Please.
As this table is the, it's the general revenues of the city as a whole, so it's not just general fund.
Okay.
And then what he presented in here is just the general fund.
Ah, okay.
So I want to make sure that you understand, this would have all of your capital projects, your special revenue funds. It's all governmental-type funds, not together. Whereas what he presented to you in this is just the general fund.
Okay. Knowing that, though, what's the increase in investment earnings? Why was it so huge?
So it was from fiscal year twenty-two, I refer it back to the. It was from this year '22. I refer back to the 9/30 quarterly for the investments. At 9:30 of '22, we were at 1.8%, and that was after it had increased quite a bit from that beginning of the fiscal year. And then for fiscal '23, we're at 5.3% interest rate. So a significant increase.
So it's just the increase in yield is the, really the sole cause of that?
Correct.
Wow. Okay. Well, thank you. Problem solved.
Okay, this is actually mostly on the sales and mixed beverage taxes, the difference that we have last year, this year, or actually the year this year.
I was, I was, I was going to party, okay.
The difference from the past, is that average? Or, I mean, how much of a difference is it from the past that we had a difference from the previous years in the sales tax collected?
If you recall, we had a company move out of Capel. It was our largest sales tax provider.
Do you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So singularly, almost that difference is attributed to that company.
Okay. Is it that much?
Yeah. Just overall, our sales tax was high.
Okay.
But you take out that one chunk.
Hmm. I was just wondering if that was a, okay.
I mean, the sales tax is actually increasing. But when you lose somebody that significant, by the way, the town that they moved to is really happy to their.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Don?
I don't have anything.
What?
I was trying to be prudent. It all looks good. It all looks good to me.
He saw you look at the.
We have 285 days cash in an unassigned fund balance, so I think we're in a pretty good position.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, we are done with work session. The time is 7:02 PM. We're going to move into
Good evening, everybody. The time is 7:30 PM, and we're going to move into the regular session of the Capel City Council. Just as a reminder, any persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance must sign the register outside the council chambers and list your residence address. Tonight, we're fortunate to have Eugenia Faulkner with us with the Church of Latter-day Saints to give our invocation, after which we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. So please remain standing.
Good evening. Our dear heavenly Father, we pray this night. We're thankful that we're here in this beautiful city of Capel. We're thankful that we have a mayor and council members that care about the city and for all the work they do. We pray that we'll pour thy blessings upon them and all those who are working on behalf of our city. For all, we pray for all the small businesses, the big businesses, and for our police and first responders to have blessings, protection, for our schools, our teachers, that they'll continue to thrive. We pray for safety and law crime in our cities, and for wisdom for all of those who lead us. We pray, Father, for the upcoming elections, that those who are presenting themselves will be true and generous of what they want to do, and that the people will recognize who are the ones that will represent them the best. We're thankful for our beautiful country, a beautiful city, and a beautiful state, and grateful for all that we have tonight. We leave this humbly in the name of thy son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Tonight, we have a proclamation designating the month of February 2024 as Career and Technical Education Month, and we are very fortunate to have several members of the high school here with, along with the CTE director, Josh Howard, and the CHS business teacher, Andrea Pertle, and multiple DECA students here. So I would like to ask them to all come down to the front with me.
Did you want to come?
Do you want to come in?
All right.
Or you just want to talk?
I'll stay up here.
Is right here fine?
I've got a DECA, one of my neighbors has a DECA sign in, in the yard. Is that anybody that live? I don't recognize anybody here. No?
Not either.
Okay. Well, I feel under pressure since Dr. Hunt with the superintendent of the school district is here as well, so we better do well tonight, right?
Yeah.
All right. So I have a proclamation here, so, and there's a lot of whereas's, so just please give, bear with us. Whereas, February 1st through 29, '23, '24 has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education. And whereas, career and technical education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for true career readiness. And whereas, students in career and technical education programs participate in authentic, meaningful experiences that improve the quality of their education and increase their engagement and achievement. And whereas, leaders from business and industry nationwide report increasing challenges related to addressing the skills gap and connecting qualified professionals with available careers in critical and growing CTE-related fields, including healthcare, energy, advanced manufacturing, cybersecurity, and information technology. I'm going to throw another one in there, engineering. And whereas, career and technical education programs ensure that employers have access to a qualified and thriving workforce, ensuring America is a strong and competitive economy. Now therefore, I, Wes Mays, Mayor of the City of Capel, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim February 1st through 29, 2024, as Career and Technical Education Month in the City of Capel, and urge all citizens to become familiar with the services and benefits offered by the career and technical education programs in our community, and to support and participate in these programs to enhance their individual skills and productivity. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of Capel to be affixed as 27th day of February 2024. So thank you very much for being here. Council, do you have any, Councilmember Nevels, I think, had a little something to say?
Uh, yes. Uh, Mayor, just want to say thank you guys for being here today. I had the amazing fortune to be able to come and visit Capel High School a couple of weeks ago, and I actually reported in these chambers about the amazing tour that we were on. I know myself, Councilmember Bijou Matthew, and Councilmember Brianna Hino Smith, who was unable to be here tonight, but we had an opportunity to tour along with members of the school board and business partners as well. And I want to say thank you for, to Dr. Brad Hunt, for extending that invitation to us. And I just want to say how fantastic it was. I got to hear you guys speak. I got to take a tour of the facility and see the programming that you guys are doing. Somebody said, I can't remember who it was, on the, the tour, but it was like today's shop class. It, it's amazing, like in the robotics department and stuff, and to see the fabrication and see some of those things, it's like what shop used to be, but in a modern day. So it was just really, really cool to see that. And when, you know, people say they're like, oh, they don't do things like they, well, yeah, they don't. They, they evolve and they change, and to see such amazing, bright young people taking advantage of these opportunities that Capel ISD has to offer really warms my heart and makes me excited about our future. So I just want to say congratulations to you, Mr. Howard, for everything that you guys are doing. Impressive group of young people, and myself, a former KCBY alum. It was really exciting to see what's going on in that department and stuff. So I just want to say congratulations. I know you guys have a bright future, and leave it better than you found it for the next group of students that are coming up. All right? Great job.
Thank you so much.
So as a working engineer, I'm still an electrical engineer, and I truly value the technical background that I had in school, and I hope you guys go through and find your career path and find what keeps you happy in the future. Did you have anything to say?
Just thank you so much for.
Thank you so much for engaging with us. One of our core values in Capel ISD is engagement, and this is a perfect example of that. And we're here for our students, and these are certainly some of our best. So thank you for recognizing them and what we're doing.
Who's going to get the proclamation?
Got to hang it up in the school somewhere.
Item number seven is our citizens' appearance, and persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list their residence address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each. An individual speaker's time may be extended for an additional two minutes with the approval of a majority of the council members present. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the city council due to the Texas Open Records Meeting Act. And once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will cut in and make the request to the mayor and council if they would like to extend, extend the speaker's time to an additional two minutes. We had one speaker signed up to speak tonight, and that's Mr. Enlow. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Al C. Enlow, 1514 Pebble Creek Drive, 26-year Capel resident. Good evening, and thank you all for your service to the City of Capel. The subject that tonight is the Northwest Dallas County Flood Control District meeting on January 30, 2024. I received an email from River Chase HOA stating as follows. Dear River Chase homeowners, as a follow-up to occasional updates from the FCD, in the next in-person meeting of the FCD has been planned for the following. Tuesday, January 30, 12:00 PM, Oaks River Chase Apartments Leasing Office, 777 Fairway Drive, Capel. Well, come to find out, starting time was 11:00 AM. I arrived at 11:50, so a lot of the discussion had taken place before I arrived. That's the elected officials talking anyway. The current elected officials present were Wayne Reynolds and Larry Jones, who have been in positions for a long period of time. Several residents and district taxpayers spoke up, asking for more transparency from the FCD board. To my knowledge, no agreement from the FCD board was made. To improve communications, Wayne Reynolds did repeat several times that the FCD is hoping to retire the current bonds in 10 years and get the City of Capel to take over FCD activities. I personally have heard this him, from him saying this earlier in earlier meetings that my wife and I attended. I am here this evening to pose the question to our mayor, city council, city manager, city engineer. Quote, it is, is the City of Capel planning to eventually take over the responsibilities of the current NCFD at some time in the future? I'm attaching the business card of Wayne Reynolds that he handed out to some of us that evening. And I'm also going to leave you with the status of the Northwest Dallas County Flood Control District. You folks might have more use for it than I did. I made some copies of some scans.
Item number eight is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately, and full descriptions are available on the screen. Council, do you have any desire to pull an item or have any questions? Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. I've moved to approve item number eight, A through G.
Seconded by Mayor Proton John. All in, all in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Nevels, John, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number nine is consider acceptance of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2023, and Vanessa Tarver is going to be talking with us about this. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Vanessa Tarver. I'm the Financial Relationships Group Manager and Strategic Financial Engagement. The item before you today is for the acceptance of the fiscal year '23 audit. And a little background that's shown on your memo is the audit is required by Section 7.13 of the House, of the Home Rule Charter. From residents to rating agencies, the report shows whoever is interested that our financial statements are accurately represented. So with that, I'd like to introduce y'all to John DeBorough, who is our audit partner, and he will go through the presentation of the results.
Thank you, Vanessa. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. Thank you for inviting me to speak with you this evening to present to you the results of the fiscal year 2023 audit. I'm happy to report that we've concluded our audit and have issued our audit opinion on the city's financial statements for the fiscal year ended September 30, 2023. We've issued an independent auditor's report with an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, which means that we feel that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We've also performed a single audit of the city's federal financial assistance programs, where we have, we have tested the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds program as a major federal program, and we've issued two reports in accordance with the federal single audit. The first of which, our independent auditor's report on internal control of a financial reporting and on compliance and other matters. We have found no findings, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies or other items that have to be reported due to non-compliance. We've also issued our independent auditor's report on compliance for each major federal program and report on internal control of a compliance program and report on internal control of a compliance in accordance with the uniform guidance. I'm happy to report that we've issued an unmodified opinion, which means that we feel that the city complied in all material respects with the direct and material compliance requirements of that major federal program, and that there were no findings, meaning that there were no instances of significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control of a compliance. We have, we have met with the City Council during the work session, went in more detail, going through the financial highlights, as well as the required communications with those charged with governance. And I would also like to thank the Finance Department and the city for all of their, the cooperation and hard work in making this a successful audit.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. This, how many years have you been giving this report to this council?
Seven years.
So thank you very much for the, for the time. We see you down there, and the answer has been pretty consistently the same every year. So thanks to Ms. Tien and her staff for allowing us to sit up here and smile. Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Tarver or Mr. Mr. Walker?
Yeah, I'd just like to elaborate on what Mayor Mays said. I think this is a report card for our Strategic Financial Engagement Department, and I think they're getting an A++. So I just want to thank Kim Tien, the director, and then Drew Edwards, Michael Echols, Michelle Perkins, Susan Ratten, Joanne Ross, and Vanessa Tarver for a job well done.
Thank you. Council, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will accept a motion. Councilmember Carroll?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I move to accept the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2023.
Thank you. And a, and a second from Councilmember Walker. Any, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Nevels, John, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Sorry to keep you up here such a short period of time, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 11 is the city manager reports with project updates, future agendas, and direction from work session. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself. For some reason, I wanted to skip 10.
Why?
I don't know.
You shouldn't want to skip that one.
I'm turning red right now. Item number 10 is consider approval of a resolution ordering a cancellation of the general municipal election on May 4th, 2024, and declaring the election of unopposed candidates for mayor, place two, four, six, and city, of the City Council of the City of Capella, and authorizing the mayor to sign. Ms. Owens.
Thank you, Mayor.
Why would we want to do this?
Why, why, oh, why? On January 23rd, you all called an election for the general election for mayor, place two, place four, and place six. The filing period was from January 17th to February 20, February 16th. You all are unopposed. So Wes Mays, Brianna Hino, Jose Smith, Kevin Nevels, Bijou K. Matthew have now been elected to a full three-year term. And so I want to say that the cancellation of this election does not have any significance or any impact on the special election. We will still hold that. This does not affect it in any way. So we will still hold an election on May 4th, with early voting still being held April 22nd. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ashley? Councilmember Nevels?
Just one comment for clarification. So the special election is going to be for place five?
That is correct.
And that is a currently contested race that will go to election?
That is correct.
Okay, cool. Just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that.
I will, I will consider a motion. Councilmember Nevels?
I'll fire away on this one. I like, I move to approve Agenda Item 10.
Mayor Protem, seconded by Mayor Protem John. All in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Nevels, John, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can go to item number 11, which is the city manager reports on project updates, future agendas, and direction from the work session. Mr. Lann?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we've got several items. Capella connects neighbors helping neighbors. The third annual event will take place on Saturday, April 13th. The website is live, so you can visit the community development page and sign up for job requests and/or to volunteer. So please do that. Fun, food, and grooves. The first event of the spring will take place in the Grove at the Capella Arts Center on March 8th. Downtown Fever and Emerald City Band will provide the music and two food trucks. I don't think the band's providing two food trucks. I think there's going to be two food trucks. There's a comma there. Wafflelicious and Taco's Bites and Beats will be on site. I know this is really important for some. Alcohol will be available for purchase at the event. It will go from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. South Beltline, the contractor continues to work on the subgrade, paving, and traffic signals between Hackberry and 635. Dart is working on the Freeport Crossing, Freeport Parkway Crossing, and it will be closing the Moore Road to install tracks that should have happened. 500 Southwestern, the hangar, the art annex, demolition remodel is underway, and Woodhurst, the contractors continuing to install utilities. And then this evening, we have with us our two new Public Works Assistant Directors. So I will ask them to stand when I, James, if you'll stand, James Meyer, James is a resident of Capella as well, and Aaron Tichter. James, James started with us last week, and Aaron, it's been several months, right?
Six months.
Six months. I knew there were several in there. All right. Very good. Well, I know Mike Garza is extremely excited to have his team at that level full, so we're excited to have them join us as well. So you will be seeing them in the future, council meetings, making presentations, and being part of the, part of the team. So Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Item number 12 is the mayor and council reports on recent and upcoming events. Community Experiences is collecting input for the 2024 Master Plan. The next meeting will be Thursday, March 7th, at 6:00 PM at the Cosby Library. Community input offers an opportunity to participate in a facilitated conversation and activities aimed at identifying community desires. And then the Core, well, the fitness center at the Core is going to be getting an upgrade with new machines, and the Core will be closed from Thursday, March 7th, through Friday, March 8th, while the new weight machines will be installed. The indoor pool, indoor track, and gymnasium will remain open. And just as a side note, I've been commenting that we were going to have a fairly major event called a solar eclipse on March 8th, and I am incorrect, it is actually April 8th. So we will be having an event put on by Community Experiences, I think, in Andy Brown Park, and more information on that to come. But I've been saying March, and it is April, so I apologize for that. Item number 13 is council committee reports concerning items of community interest and involvement with no council action or deliberation permitted. Item A is Report on the Woven Health Clinic by Councilmember Mark Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief update for Woven Health. I wanted to let everyone know that Lisa Rigby resigned as the Executive Director for Woven in January, so she could move to California to be close to her family. Lisa's departure will undoubtedly be felt, given the remarkable heights that she's achieved with, with Woven. Her replacement, Jackie Rakowski, comes with a great deal of experience serving in the nonprofit organizations like the Alzheimer's Association, the National MS Society, and the Community Health Clinic of Collin County. With her at the helm, Woven is certain not to miss a beat. Just some quick stats from 2023. They saw 759 total new patients, total of 2291 unique patients, and then they had almost 10,000 patient visits over the year. They've got three new programs that they wanted to let everybody know about. One is the Heart Healthy Champions Program empowers patients with tools and resources for better heart health. The Mind Matters Wellness Program offers accessible mental health support through counseling and therapy, aiming to promote wellness, excuse me, wellness, reduce stigma, and empower healthy lives. And the third program is the Direct Primary Care Program, which prioritizes patients with affordable, comprehensive care by bypassing their traditional insurance complexities. And just some achievements over the past year that Woven has had. Eighty-nine percent of the health, high blood pressure patients are controlled, compared to a national average of 54%. 60% of their patients with depression are in remission, compared to 6% as the national average. And then 15% of the prediabetic patients have now moved to a normal blood sugar level in a 12-month period. So they're doing great things there, and I hope to see them continue with it.
Thank you very much. Item B is a report on the Dallas Regional Mobility Coalition from Councilmember Don Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. One update from the world of transportation that I would give you, and it is relatively long-term in nature, but I would say it's significant. If you will recall, a number of weeks ago, there was a letter sent to the Regional Transportation Council from mayors of 12 DFW-area cities, including our own mayor, as well as the Chair of the Dallas Regional Mobility Coalition, requesting that the RTC commit to examine how public transportation can evolve to meet the needs of the, of the region. And it's sort of, to sum up what they were looking for, is they acknowledge and embrace that the growth of the region requires an efficient transit solution in order to provide predictable, cost-effective, and reliable mobility for residents and businesses. And they believe that a comprehensive study is needed to assess the effectiveness of regional transit today and what trend, regional transit should look like over the next 40 years. A little bit of background, just to frame that up. So currently, the DFW area is served by three public transportation providers, which is Dart, DCTA, and the Trinity Metro over in Fort Worth. There is a 12-county metropolitan area that has about 8 million people in it. That is supposed to grow to 11 million by 2045. So along with that projected population growth, a lot of the surge is going to be outside of the existing transit authorities. And so these cities have decided, we need to look at what, what is this going to look like over the next 40 years? So North Central Texas Council of Governments has approved contracts for a couple of million dollars to enjoy, employ a couple of consultants that will help transportation managers, board members, and elected officials develop this next-generation transit system. And some of the things they are going to consider are coming up of what is a legislative program need to look like for transit over the next few, number of years. Come up with strategies to increase transit authority membership from different cities, as well as how these different authorities can collaborate. Come up with strategies for infill development, as well as fare collection-type strategies, just to name a handful. So while this is not anything immediate, this is very long-term, and certainly, the growth of our region sort of dictates that we have got to understand what transit is going to look like in the future, and in a, in a, in a region that has had a little bit of, you know, ad hoc transit authorities put together, as we have all grown together and then exploded outside of those authorities, it is a, a big mystery and a big puzzle that we're going to have to figure out. So COG is on its way to do it. So your letter did a very good job, Mayor. So thank you for that. That's all I have.
I'm sure it was just me that did it, so.
There you go. I think, I'm sure it was. That's what they said in the press release.
Thank you, sir. Item number 14 are public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. Do we have any public service announcements? Seeing Councilmember Nevels?
Council, I just wanted to remind you that we have the monthly senior luncheon tomorrow. If there are any council members that are interested in joining us, please come see me. But we were joined by council members last time, so I definitely love to have you guys come visit with the seniors and see what's going on at the seniors' center. They're a lively bunch, so we love visiting with them. So, but if you'd love to see me, or love to see us, so we can schedule that, we'd love to have you guys come and visit.
Thank you very much. Item number 15, there was no necessary action from the executive session, so therefore, there being no further business before this council, we are adjourned at 8:00 PM.